Welcome to About the Facts Podcast with Brittany and Mike. A podcast designed to educate, navigate, and empower you to become an advocate for your family, yourself, and your community. We uncover the facts and dive into the issues that prevent people like you and me from thriving. You'll gain the tools and the insights to ask the right questions, challenge the system, and stand up for what's right. Get ready to be informed, inspired, and empowered because the power to advocate starts with you. Let's get to it.
It's an amazing day and welcome to About the Facts Podcast. We're so excited to be here. I'm your host, Mike Shelton.
And I am Brittany Grant.
And we're just elated that you've shared with us. We thank you so much for following us, subscribing to us. I think that we've done like eight hundred followers just in a week or so.
We are so excited. If this is your first time tuning in, About the Facts Podcast is an interview-based podcast. So we bring in subject matter experts, thought leaders, change agents, community leaders, politicians to talk about what's going to affect you and your family.
And that's why we have started with city council Ward seven in Oklahoma City candidates. But we want to educate our people. We want to educate the community. We want to educate families and individuals how to empower themselves to be the best self-advocates they can, not only for themselves, but their family and community. And we believe that About the Facts is taking all the fake news out of it. We want to make sure that we get the right people in front of you to just make sure that we give you the facts.
Yeah, About the Facts.
About the Facts, that's exactly right. And so we've had, again, we had Ward seven city council folks come on. We had Pennington, we've had Pettis, we've had Masood Halk. We've had them all on here and they made a tremendous presentation and we gave them really an opportunity just to introduce themselves to the community for those people that did not know them. What kind of feedback are you giving?
We're getting a lot of great feedback on these episodes because as a candidate, and I've been a candidate myself, you have these forums and you have two-minute openers and then you have a minute long to answer the questions that they they give you, but you don't have the opportunity or the platform to just really talk about what matters most, what your platform is about. And so I think this show really gives the opportunity for our candidates to just talk about themselves, talk about their platforms, and what is to come.
Absolutely. And let me just tell you this, of course, the Ward seven city council election is a nonpartisan election, but it'll be on February eleventh. The Oklahoma City Public School Board Chair seat will be on the ballot, nonpartisan seat will be on the ballot February eleventh. But we're gonna also be talking to the Oklahoma County Commissioner candidate and.
We've got Sarah Bana that's coming. And we've got former state representatives.
Jason Lowe, not former. He's still the state rep. In the best district in Oklahoma. Yeah, District ninety-seven.
And former Senator, that's Anastasia Pittman that's coming in.
Absolutely, and Jade Green, which is also, he's the independent. You won't see him on the primary ballot on February eleventh. You will see him April first on the ballot because that is a partisan election.
Absolutely. So we're just excited about having all of these candidates on so they can share what they want to do in and around the community and what their platforms are.
Well, let me just tell you this is that it's so important to have these conversations because we know in November, we had a very emotional election. A lot of people have put their heads in the sand and said they're done voting, they're done, but these are the elections that really, really do matter. These elections touch you every day. These elections touch your kids, builds your streets, and we make, we need to make sure that we don't put our head in the sand, but we double down and get, get engaged in on this upcoming election. Again, it's on February eleven.
Yes, absolutely.
Oh, we got somebody at the door that's coming in to talk to us. Let's see who we have today.
Hello, hello.
Hello.
How are y'all?
Good, how are you?
We have Jade Green, he's the independent candidate for Oklahoma County Commissioner, District One. We're glad to have you on About the Facts Podcast. Well, let me just tell you how this is gonna work is we're just gonna ask you some questions and if you get stuck, it's okay. Just let us know and we'll, we'll try to come save you, but if I get stuck, just come save me.
Will do.
You know, Jade, we, I've had the pleasure of knowing you for years and years and I'm just gonna tell you, you're independent now, but I knew you through Democratic politics and now you're an independent. So why don't you just kind of start and tell us how you transitioned to become an independent, but tell us about yourself and why you decided to vote, to run for Oklahoma County District One?
Sure, well, we'll, we'll break this off into some segments. I mean, it's a, it's a, it's a long path and as you said, Mike, we've known each other for a while. I first got involved with the Democratic Party back in around two thousand six, two thousand seven. So in the time since then, I had worked with everything from young Democrats in two thousand eight, I had the honor of being Barack Obama's State Director here in Oklahoma. And after that, and in subsequent years, did a lot of work with the state party, with the county party, and with the two caucuses up at the Capitol, and did a lot of election work through that time. You know, my family background is a lot of Union Democrats out of Ohio, you know, a few generations back. And so that's why I was registered as a Democrat to begin with. I mean, you know, back, decade and a half back, I think we were called Blue Dogs is what we were called, you know? And so anyway, did a lot of work, did a lot of elections at the state level. In two thousand ten, I was a Jim Priest manager for Attorney General in that, in that race and then did a lot of stuff with the county party. I think in twenty twelve through twenty fourteen, did some get out the vote efforts. I know that, I can't remember if it was fourteen or sixteen, but there was a year in there where Oklahoma County itself had been kind of trending a little bit blue and Oklahoma County was able to put together a good get out the vote effort that supported the elections of our Colin Walkies, our Mickey Dollins, our Forrest Bennetts when they were in. So, you know, kind of dating what, you know, what that was like. And I also kind of during this time, I'm, you know, blessed to have two, two girls who were born, you know, kind of during this time period. And so I was, I'd kind of started going back and forth. You know, one of the big frustrations that I had with the party was how they handled themselves business-wise internally. You know, I dealt with a lot of it and there's a lot of good folks involved, but the problem with a lot of things that were just going on structurally with the party was that the drama slowed down real progress per se.
And I think that both parties face a lot of those obstacles with drama within their own party.
Absolutely, absolutely. And if you look at where we were, because you know, back when I was around, this is when control of the Senate was going over to the Republicans. And you see a lot, it doesn't matter, you know, each of the parties have got camps within them and you see those fights. And this is something where as Democrats have been dealing with this in Oklahoma for years, is something that was newer on Republicans and you continue to see this involved because, you know, one of those truisms with men is that when you get one group that gets control, that group is going to fracture and start fighting for that control amongst themselves. And that's going on in a big way in the Oklahoma Senate right now.
Absolutely. So Oklahoma County Commissioner, District One seat is too hard to explain the boundaries. However, why don't you just kind of try to give an idea of what that boundary is, maybe name the towns that are all encompassed within the Oklahoma County District One?
Pretty simply put, it's the west side, east side, mid-dell, and the GBC on the south side. You know, so you can go from, you can go from Meridian on the west side, all the way over to county line on the east side. You follow down the river a little bit until you drop down to twenty-nine, forty-four. That runs all the way out towards that mid-dell area. On the north side of it, you got sixty-third. So like I say, it's west side, east side, mid-dell, and the GBC down on the south side.
Okay, please, okay, GBC, okay, what's the GBC?
The Grand Barrio Central.
Oh.
It's a very, very core of the south side and it is, love y'all, but y'all have the worst voter performance of any area in the state. We gotta work on that, y'all.
All right, gotta work on it. So you've identified the boundaries. So let us know, we understand that this job is gonna be complex. So for individuals or voters who don't necessarily understand what a commissioner, county commissioner does, kind of give us an idea of what county commissioner, what their duties are.
Well, I think that we can sum up the duties of a county commissioner, the, the, the broadest, most impactful duties are simply summed up in this truism, the budget. The budget is the plan. And so when you're responsible for overseeing and approving a budget, then you're looking at the entire plan for this organization. And so there are obviously a number of things, you know, you've got the, with county commissioners, this varies district to district, you know? Roads and bridges may be a big deal for someone out in Otoka County, but they're not gonna be, you know, maybe as much of a big deal for folks that are in an area where you've got a lot of incorporated city overlap that's responsible for those maintenance, you know? Again, those are the things that have to be worked on and we all know that Oklahoma roads, it don't matter rural or city, it can be a little rough sometimes, so those have to be looked at. You know, the, obviously, the, the big deal, and you can't talk about this race, you can't talk about those responsibilities without talking about what's been going on with our incarceration and mental health systems here in the county. And that is the big deal, that's the big thing that, you know, we as a county, and I believe we as a state, need to work to resolve. You know, we are in a, we're in a situation, I mean, there's, there's been a lot going on with this, not gonna, you know, dive in, but what, here's what I see. What I see are, I see that there have been a lot of positive things going on in Oklahoma County as it relates to our justice reforms with our mental health reforms and what's going on here. We can see signs of progress and I see building blocks, but I also see a situation now where we've got about a three hundred million dollar reckoning coming. Okay, we've got a jail that was approved to be built for X amount of dollars. Part of my background, I've spent oh fifteen years or so as a general contractor. And so I get construction, I get construction costs. And when we're at now where we're gonna have to ask voters for more money because of delays, for however those delays occurred, but you've got this ballooning, ballooning cost here, there's gonna be a reckoning, you know? And I think that in that, we need to make sure that folks, good ideas, things that are out there are brought to bear. We need to take a look at the entire system as a whole, not just what's going on with that jail. So those are one of, that is what I hope to be able to do. In the professional work that I've done, there is a whole lot of working with both sides of the aisle. You know, one thing with me as an independent, doesn't matter if we have to deal with things at the county, we're gonna get, the state has gotten themselves involved at this point in time. We're dealing with state guys. We have to, you know, one thing that I don't have to deal with as an independent and what I do is no one gets to say yes or no because I'm this party or that party. It's all on the ideas, it's all on the facts, right there, here's what it is, here's what's going on. And you're gonna be saying yes or no to that, you're not gonna be saying yes or no with the cop out that you're a Republican or you're a Democrat. You get what I'm saying? So.
I understand. Let me, let me just kind of go back, there's first question, I talked about how we've known each other, you talked about your political, I mean, your political background, working with the party. Let's talk about just what you do now. And let's talk about what you do now, just briefly, but let's also talk about, I don't know why, every question's I'm gonna ask has multiple questions in it. So what do you do now? How's campaigning going? What are they saying on the doors if you're knocking doors?
Sure, sure. And that's a, and that's a great, that's a great pickup and then segue. So after some of the stuff that I've done with the Democratic Party, I found that I was more aligned as an independent-minded, you know, independent-minded folks. There are things that I agree with on folks on both sides of the aisle and I decided to focus in on things that mattered to me and working on those issues in a nonpartisan fashion. The, the big event there for me was in June twenty-six, twenty eighteen, I was the director of the Yes On Seven Eighty-Eight campaign.
So Yes On Seven Eighty-Eight's what?
Medical marijuana.
Right.
So for everyone that has access to medicine instead of drugs now, you're welcome and thank you for your support in that. Now, since that time, since that passage, which was a historical election, we broke out turnout, we broke turnout records by a hundred and twenty percent in that election. And so since that time, I have worked as a, I'd always been on the campaign side, but started working on the advocacy side and working with folks both sides of the aisle of the Capitol to try to have a level playing field for industry and provide consumer-safe products to, to Oklahomans. And so that's what, that's what I do a lot of and have done the last seven years, again, working with folks on both sides of the aisle on that.
So how's campaigning going?
Well, not bad, not bad. The, you know, it's interesting, these, I always found the municipal calendar to be really interesting. You know, here we are, like you said, Mike, you're coming out of a really hot presidential year. You know, a lot of folks got a lot of feelings about, you know, what's going on. And so you come out of a presidential, you're going into Thanksgiving, Christmas, you know? Truth be told, most of your voters don't want to hear nothing about any sort of political race until after the first of the year. Now blessed Democrats are, they, they have to deal with, they have to go out there and forge ahead with that early primary date, right? But what I've been doing are a few things. Number one, reaching out to a lot of folks across the district and kind of seeing what, what their thoughts are, what kind of ideas that they have. Because in my campaign, there aren't gonna be any promises after this Democratic primary is over. I'm not getting in it, I'm not messing with it, I'm gonna vote in it because I can as an independent, you know? But we're, I want to see Democrats sort out, figure out who nominee is over there and then we're gonna start a real, real serious conversation about what this office looks like and more importantly, about what solutions look like to the problem. You know, my goal here, number one, is to get us over the hump on this facility and our system that we're having to build. And so, you know, we're gonna, we're gonna get involved with that, we're going to see, we're gonna see kind of what feedback is and we're gonna propose solutions to this and that's what the campaign is gonna be, not just a, well, I'm gonna do this, or gonna do this, or gonna do this. You're about to see a live-fire drill of what it looks like and the type of strategy, tactic, and initiatives that we've been taking as cannabis advocates across the state to say, hey, we may be up against a certain power structure or this, that, or the other, but you know, when talking to them fails, you know, there's always more one way to skin a cat. And so we're gonna get into some of that, but right now, I want, you know, Democrats be, you know, I've got plenty of people that aren't Democrats that I'm talking to and talking to my folks around the district and kind of seeing where they're at. So we'll really start to amp it up here right after the Democratic primary.
Right.
So what do you think sets you apart from the other candidates?
Well, I think we've got some impressive candidates. I think we've got some good folks with good resumes that have been working on this. I know we've got some folks in here that have been, I mean, this has been their all-in focus, you know? And they've been really, really, really involved in this. So that gives me one difference is that it's almost like having a fresh set of eyes come in and take a look at it. You know that saying, you can't see the forest from the trees? Well, a lot of things when I'm working with elected officials or other advocacy groups, it's one thing that I'm always reminding them to do is to step back and take a look at this from thirty thousand feet. You've got to be able to maintain that cool-headedness to, you know, step back and take a look at what's going on or you might be missing something, you know? So it is kind of like putting a fresh set of legs in the race. Outside of that, there, I mean, there are some just life experience differences. Again, I've spent, at the time that I've spent working as a general contractor, one of my concerns with the jail is not just what is it, how does it get built? What is the cost of it? Where is it built? I want to know whether that thing's built, that it's built right. We have folks breaking out of the current jail within three months because they weren't mixing mortar mix right and you could get the bricks out with a toothbrush.
Right.
You know, those are the type of things, you know?
Right. Let me, let me just ask you a question. To speaking about the jail, we've had many deaths at the jail, we've had hostage situations at the jail. CEO just recently resigned from the jail, which this might be the third one that's, that, that they may have had, I can't remember how many, but she's recently resigned. As county commissioner, what can we do to fix the jail? And if you can't, just kind of talk about the responsibility of the county commissioner to the jail and its budget.
Well, I think in the, in the, in the broadest stroke with the jail, the first thing we need to really take a look at here is how much jail do we really need? How much jail do we really need? You know, one of those successful building blocks that I've been seeing are the drop in the number of folks that are incarcerated in that jail. You know, when you fundamentally, when you create prison beds, you create a demand for prisoners and that's just the facts. And I am, you know, in, in what I do, I support businesses, you know? But I'm against predatory capitalism, if that makes sense.
Right.
And so what I think that the county needs to do is they need to take a real hard look at exactly what are our needs? Are we about to overbuild something? If we're about to overbuild something, you know, if we're about to be asked for another three, four hundred million dollars to overbuild something, here's the thing, and this is what, you know, when I look at this, this is why I'm wading into this. I see, you know, a couple, it's always more complicated, but you got a couple of different sides of this. What I see coming is I see that Oklahoma County voters are gonna be asked to vote on money. And I've got a feeling that Oklahoma County voters may not be for arbitrarily handing over another three hundred million for something that doesn't do things like, you know, you can't say, well, we've got this generic jail plan, we're gonna drop it in here in this random spot. Well, I've got a whole bunch of District One that's affected by this. You know, I want to see what's gonna, I want to see what is going to be done to mitigate those effects, right? And so that's, those are the conversations that I'm looking at. It's, it's kind of like this, you know, you've got your basic roles of the county commissioner. You can look on the website, here are your roles, you know? But it is the budget, but in this scenario, we need more than what's on the website out of a county commissioner. We need to have someone that's gonna come in and say, hey, let's take a look at this, let's get everything on the table, get it done now, not screwing around. Let's get this on the table now. We're gonna, at some point in time, you have to make decisions and go with it based on the facts in hand. And I want to make sure that everyone's facts are getting in here and being considered when we're coming up with the formula of what incarceration and mental health support in Oklahoma County look like. The other thing is that when it comes down to it and we assess this cost, I want to know if we have a state and surrounding counties that are dependent on us to operate this jail, this isn't about per diem, this is about upfront cost, okay? And I, it's something I, you know, I'll pledge here on this show, you know? One way or another, I'm gonna advocate for it, but if I'm elected, I guarantee I will be at the Capitol the next day having some real conversations with state leaders about what it looks like to help Oklahoma County with that. You know, I come out of an industry, we fought, I fight every day to keep an industry alive that has put in several hundred million, getting close to a billion dollars of revenue into this state that what is not needed for regulation was dedicated to education and mental health. You know, I want to see the dollars that we've put in go somewhere where they're needed. There's gonna be a strong case on this.
Yeah. So you talk about mental health, there's a, what, forty million of the ARBA that was supposed to, for the mental health facility with the jail. So would you have rather seen that spent on mental health or in the community?
I don't see why we don't do both. And that's gonna be a focus of what I'm talking about. This isn't, you know, guys, when we're looking at this, you know, this is something that we need to bring everyone together. We need to take a look at these needs. I'll tell you right now, I see a bunch of stuff in the community. I saw a lot of those things that that ARBA money could have been spent on locally that we should kind of already be getting in that direction. You know, there are those needs. And so I think that any, I'll put it to you this way, my current thought, my current thought, and this is gonna evolve as we bring in more folks, but at the end of the day, any bond issue that goes to pick up additional dollars for that jail needs to also include something to address those needs of those nonprofits. You know, when you're asking me for six hundred million to do this, then I'm gonna say, well, I, I think we need to right-size this thing, let's take a look at it and let's, are we paying for incarceration, mental health services, and then what are we doing for the community for District One? You know, those dollars may need to go into a lot of expanded stuff going on to help mitigate the impact of that jail being in that area. There are a number of ways that can go about it, you know? At the same time, there are dollars that could be used, I think it was Deer Creek needs fire department. Well, I mean, come on, guys, we want to make sure the fire department's up to snuff no matter where it's at. It's, I don't want to call it like a maps for Oklahoma County type of a thing. You know, again, the first thing to do is we need to assess the real needs because we don't want to just go and ask all our, you know, start dropping property taxes, so we need to address the needs, we need to see where the state's at, and I want to make sure that those needs, those broader needs in the community are met as well. Let's get this together, let's do it once.
Yeah, I mean, you talked about budget prior, like that's a real conversation of budget and where it's allocated.
Absolutely, and these are all, and it's like I said, yo, it's the budget is the plan. And politics is simply the business of who gets what, when, where, why, and how.
So that piece of property just next to Dale City, they are fighting it, they've been fighting it being placed in northeast, in, in Dale City area. I understand why the community we live in has worked to prevent it to be put in our backyard as well. My question to you is, is how will you, what will you do or where's a good place to put the, the jail? If nobody wants it, where should we be putting the jail?
Well, here's, what we have to look at is we have to look at this situation in real time now. You know, that's been a big, a big issue for the last couple of years and at this point, it's basically been put to rest, you know? Short of extraordinary measures, absolutely extraordinary measures, even a person elected to county commissioner, District One, they're one out of three votes. So barring extraordinary measures with an attorney general's opinion in place, that's where that jail's gonna be. You know, and I've just gotta be, and that's what I'll always be about this, I'm gonna be real. Now, that being, and what's interesting, this is interesting over on the cannabis side, you know, something I watched, the attorney general's opinion is correct. Without going way far into the weeds on it, I've spent more time the last year dealing with local permitting, certificates of occupancy, how that relates to the state fire marshal, gotten to know the SFM guys really well. I mean, there's been an entire thing in our industry over this type of zoning and permitting and I'm fortunate to have met some of the absolute top city planners in the state when it comes to this. You know, the AG's got it right. Now, here's what I say to that, folks, I say, well, you know, the DMAG, well, no, guys, you know, again, that's something you always need to look at and what we're working with. I'm happy the state's here now. Because now that the state has entered, why did the state enter? Ask yourselves that question because this is so damn important, not just Oklahoma County, but to the state as a whole. So now that the state has arrived, is it that important? It obviously is.
Right.
Why is this on Oklahoma County to support everyone? I don't care about what you're per diem paying is, that's set by law, what you can pay, what they gonna pay. I'm not trying to be on the hook for all of that if I'm finding that X amount of capacity is, say, you know, federal transfers, they got an airport for that, you know?
Right. Let me ask you another question. As county commissioner, you are responsible for many employees. I think that you have about thirty to thirty-five employees that do your street work, you got administrative staff, you got a thousand other county employees that work for the county that you work with, county commissioners. County commissioner, a lot of people don't realize, have a tremendous amount of influence and power and lots of money. And a lot of people don't know this, in the, in the early eighties, we are, we, you probably, I know it, Oklahoma, in the early eighties, Oklahoma has the biggest government scandal ever in history and a lot of people went to jail for it because of stuff that was happening in county commissioner's office. How do you, how do you stay out of trouble? How do you work with others and make sure things get done? And do you plan on keeping the staff? Will you change the staff? Have you heard much about how, what kind of work that they've done?
So a couple of things, yes. First of all, seventy out of seventy-seven counties, we had county commissioners go to jail. It was the largest corruption case in United States history, period, from day one, you know, Oklahoma. Imagine that, imagine that. We're number one in something. So, so yes, there was that and I mean, that's obviously, it's one of those things that's evident in the paperwork, you know? You're not supposed to, you know, achieve any personal gain, you know, from, from the office. Here's the thing, you know, power is corrosive, you know? Power is a corrosive thing and the, as far as myself personally, I'm fine, you know? I've been around the block, you know? I believe that material things are a burden, you know? And so I'm good, you know? I don't, money, you, you, the book I read tells me you can't serve two gods. So I'm here to serve the people.
Right.
Okay? And I'm here to make sure that they get the money. Okay, and I'm here to make sure that they get the most out of their tax dollars. And so that's what it comes down to, and the number one thing that helps that transparency, you know? Let's not, when, if things are put out for bid, you know, let's just not let it drop out there and kinda where the secret places where you gotta go to find the bids. How about this? How about, you know, if anything goes out for bid, I'll hop out there and tell everyone on social media. Hey, go check the bid site, it's out there, you know? There is, because there is in county commissioner, you're talking about a lot of dollars. I mean, imagine a scenario where if uh, folks went along with the concept that we get bond dollars, you know? That would be appropriated, be able to be assessed to, let's say I wind up with twenty million dollars to split up in nonprofits around the district. Like the others would. Well, I mean, that is a scenario that sets up, I mean, that is ripe. Ripe for corruption, especially among the county commissioner. So that's the type of stuff that'll have to be, have to be done. And I believe that transparency is, goes a long, long way towards preventing that.
Right.
So we talked about this position being complex. We've also talked about different outside pressures, um, when it comes to your duties. How do, how would you balance those pressures as the county commissioner?
So outside pressures are simple, outside pressures are simple. For me, as an independent. Look at the outside pressures I automatically drop that the others don't. You know, there will always be party pressure. So that right there is a huge chunk of it in and of itself. From there, it comes down to pressures from interest groups, right? You know, the big money guys come in and so on and so forth. Well, you know, um, you know, one thing, one thing about me is that uh, I've got a history of going toe to toe with the big guys. All of them at one damn time, okay? And coming out on top without the money, you know? And that is something that we actually saw a lot in primaries this year over on the GOP side. There are a lot of folks that are at the Capitol now that were outspent thirty to one, and the grassroots come out on top.
Right.
You know, and that is always something real in Oklahoma County. So the thing is, is that what I want is not, I don't want your check. I want your ideas, I want your solutions, I wanted that out there, and I wanna see how that works and everything else. And again, if we can sort this out and get it to work together, then it is. I mean, everything's gotta stand on the merit regardless of what it looks like coming through the door, you know? Ideas stand on merit, you know, it's the way I deal with uh, uh, legislation up at the Capitol. Oh, well, this person said this, this person said this. Mike, you know this as well as I do, what's on paper? What you got on that paper right there?
Right.
Okay, what you talking about otherwise? What's in that bill right now? That's what's real.
Right.
You know?
So you, earlier you talked about Deer Creek needing a, a, a fire department. And which is important to Deer Creek if you live out, out in Deer Creek, or Creek, as we've watched Los Angeles burn down. And uh, uh, there are areas here in District One that are often neglected. Forest Park, Spencer, uh, that Spencer areas, Oklahoma County areas out in uh. Uh, just a little bit past Spencer, the, uh, the Colma Park. My question to you is, is can you just kinda describe what your responsibility as county commissioner is to those? To those little towns, and I have part B, but I'm gonna ask you to answer that one first too.
My responsibility as county mi- county commissioner to anyone in the district that has needs, that has resource needs. Is to listen to those needs, see what those are. And to work to get those people those resources. It's that simple. Now, obviously, we have budgetary limits, so there's a balancing act. We have to, we have to look for those things. But I believe again, that advocating now, even before we see anything that comes out of our current county commissioners. Or what may come, you know, let's talk about what those bonds are. That's immediately going to bat to get those needs filled. As I, you know, walk and talk with everyone and say, hey, you know, they need this, they need this, they need this, then let's get a list. And let's check it twice. Doesn't mean that everyone's gonna get what they need, but you have to listen first, you have to assess it. And then you have to see what resources are available from the county. And if in, uh, you also have to look at, you know, with those communities, maybe there is a resource, maybe there is a private organization that might be able to help get in that direction. You know, that there might be able to be something done. It's about getting folks connected, identifying, hey, these folks, I'm seeing one of these, there's a common thread here. But they don't know them and they don't know them. Here, y'all get together and talk, that might be a good place too. You know, try to facilitate communication. I think that's what a big, big role here, that's not necessarily on the paper. But if you're gonna be in a leadership role, then take leadership on communication and start sorting it out.
So, so often out in far northeast Oklahoma City, some of those communities that really depend on that county commissioner's office. Are neglected, cause they don't have the votes. And so your being an independent really intrigues me to help those communities. You're not really focused on Democrat or Republican, you're in the middle. And so are you familiar with Hicks addiction, addition out in Spencer area? Well, whether you're not, whether you are or you're not, it's, it's communities like that that really depend on trash service. Because they don't get trash service from Oklahoma City, and they depend on Oklahoma County. All I'm gonna ask, and this is really a request, is that you engage that area and make sure that uh, they get the uh, services they need. But you also build roads, you build roads for the small towns, all towns under five thousand people, and so Forest Park needs your help.
Well, I tell you, you know, you talked about uh, you know, go crews and all this, that and the other, you know, one thing that, uh, one thing about me is I got a lot of time on equipment. I've built a bunch of roads, you know, personally, so y'all might have a hard time keeping me off the excavator.
Build your roads for you.
Like, I mean, if, I mean, what do we need to do? Do we need to put in some overtime or something, you know, I don't know? But I had, uh, you know, I have not really ever heard, you know, and I hear a lot, I hear a lot about a lot, you know? I have not really ever heard any real complaints about the general functioning of the staff, you know, coming out of District One. And I'll tell you this right now, if it ain't broke, you don't fix it. You know, so if I'm elected and I go in, I've, I've reached out to some of those staff, you know, probably. Oh, three, four weeks ago, haven't heard anything back from them, you know?
That's, that's fine, that's fine.
But if elected, you know, we go in, we'll take a look at it, and when you see things that are working, you don't go in there, you know? You don't go tip the whole boat over, right? What I, if there is, you know, and I've got every reason to believe at this point that we've got a good professional staff in there. You know, we've got a fellow that's on that staff that's had to step up into a role as a county commissioner right now, you know? And if those folks are in there doing a good job, and I don't have a bunch of constituents telling me that, you know, hey. I was supposed to get this pothole fixed six months ago and it ain't been fixed yet. Then, you know, let's let the staff do what professionals do, you know, professional public servants do. Because obviously, I'll have a whole lot of work going out and working on drawing in more resources for our county. And for our district.
There's a lot of those employees that have been there twenty, thirty years through multiple county commissioners, and they've done a great job.
I'll tell you one thing, I'll tell you one thing, we say this a lot in politics when new folks come in, you know, the old, they don't know what they don't know. Well, at least on this, I do know what I don't know within the functioning of the county government. Again, I mean, I work with our state agencies, Bureau of Narcotics, Marijuana Authority, Department of Agriculture, DEQ, Water Resources Board. Go on down the list, you know, I'm real familiar with public servants and how they do and the challenges they face sometimes, you know? So uh, I appreciate their service, and you uh, uh, one would be a fool to, you know, break a machine. That's already running. Like I said, in the meantime, you know, I would hope that those good folks would stay on, you know? They may not be so offended by what my approach to things is, you know? But again, it's uh, one of those things where I see a good, a lot of amount of the work that needs to be done is gonna be out here. And working to try to bring this county, not just District One, but this county as a whole together. And have this reckoning on what we're doing moving forward, so that all of those folks that are in the office can continue to do their job after we get a decision out of some voters here.
Yeah, well Jed, tell our listeners how they can contact you. How can we get in contact with you?
It's simple, text me, four oh five, two zero eight, nine four four nine.
Write, write direct to him.
That's it, that's it. Hey, guys, guys, uh, and, and, and Mike, and it's serviced a billion dollar industry and, you know, thousands of folks. So, you know, if you've got something, text is the best way. I don't, you know, I don't know about spam calls or whatever, but if someone wants to reach out to me, they can do that. And then again, here in, here in fairly short order, folks are gonna, they're probably gonna be tired of hearing from me. Before it's all said and done.
Yeah, we appreciate you being here and being on About the Facts podcast. Brittany, how do people get in contact with us? How do people get signed up?
Um, so we are currently on YouTube podcasts and Spotify right now, we've got our social media pla- pages as well. So please like, follow and subscribe and share this information, because the more that you hear from these individuals and candidates. That you know about their platform. So we heard it today from Mr. Jed Green, and we are just excited and thankful for you to have been here today.
Yeah, I really appreciate what you guys are doing, and thank you for elevating the conversation beyond sound bites for folks.
Absolutely, I think we think it's so important. Well, it's, it's an amazing day, and we thank you for being with us.
Yeah, let's go make the most of it.